Everybody, and welcome to the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen meeting of February 27, 2018. I'm going to ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm also going to ask that we stay standing for a moment of silence for Army Staff Sergeant Stevens Breg, who is a Yarmouth resident and lost his battle with cancer this week.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. First item on the agenda this evening is public announcements. Jack has asked to speak. Mr. McCormick, if you'd like to speak first. No, Jack McCormick, please. Thank you.
All right. No problem, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, all. Jack McCormick from Precinct 3. First, let me say that I admire your patience and perseverance in suffering through portions of this section of your meeting. It should be devoted to comments and not questions and answers, much less debate. Now to my comments. I would like to assure the citizens of Yarmouth that the town is in good hands. We have a Board of Selectmen who labor long and hard for the town, not just two hours every week, but other hours studying materials pertinent to the town's affairs. We are fortunate to have a talented team and a town administrator and assistant administrator that are a credit to the town. We also have a group of very competent department heads. And as Bob Lawton used to say, the town could not run without volunteers. But as one who has been a volunteer on various boards and committees and commissions for going on 25 years, the volunteers could not function without the assistance and guidance of the very competent town staff. Again, in my humble opinion, the town is in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you for your service to our community as well. Via.
So, what was that all about last night? Unveiling of a new pathway for promotion in this town? You push for multimillion-dollar expenditures, pull a stunt, come up with a use of golf course for soccer. Why not go all the way to pickleball courts?
We're hoping to.
On the golf course. Okay, that's good. That's good. And that's how you're going to get promoted in this town. Now, what about the cemetery disaster or the firing of the sailing coach? Such great examples of leadership and interpersonal relationships. Did this board have a collective short-term memory loss? What's going on? I mean, I guess maybe Peter came back to haunt us. That's all I can say.
Yeah.
It's unbelievable. I just, I want you to make sure that whenever the Vineyard Wind people come in here, that they bring information about how much it would cost them to make landfall in Somerset instead of on New Hampshire Avenue.
Chris.
Good evening. Christine Greeley from West Yarmouth. Unaccustomed, as I am to public speaking, I have actually three things I need to mention briefly. One is, I wanted to question whether or not you have all gotten your own personal copies of the report out of the state that ran 21, 23 pages on the review of the application through Lewis Bay. If you haven't, I will leave a copy here that could be made for people. So, I think that's very important because I think it was characterized as having a few dozen kinds of things that need to be dealt with. If you really start to read it, it's quite comprehensive. I think that, I'm also very, very tired of, and I think there are a lot of us who've been working on this, of being accused of being opposed to either wind farms, to clean energy, or to Vineyard Wind. We're not. We are absolutely, completely, totally opposed to the placement of those cables in Lewis Bay. That's it. Go put them somewhere else. You know, go follow Revolution Wind, Bay State Wind, you know, go follow another model in terms of landfall, but not through Lewis Bay. And I just want that clarified because it's actually getting kind of tiring to have to defend, tiresome to defend that as an issue. And I also noticed that in today's newspaper, you're getting yet another offer on the purchase of Lewis Bay, that, you know, now we're going to do some educational sorts of kinds of things. And I can speak on behalf of Cape Cod Tech at this point, that as of today, we had not known about this. We've had no offer to do the educational things that are mentioned, you know, in the article that are going to be done. Then I want to move on to marijuana. I left some materials for you on the table. Obviously, you're aware that earlier this week, because I have forwarded those to both Dan, to Chris, and to the selectman email address, that the state Cannabis Control Commission finally had some wisdom and put an end, or at least a moratorium of their own, on the delivery of marijuana and also on the social settings, the cafes, yoga parlors, things like that. I guess, you know, they sort of had some wisdom a little bit about the 107 pages of what they're allowing. I have a lot of problems around all of it because, as we well know, in Colorado, you had to opt in as a community to sell marijuana. They knew better, the guys who constructed this ballot question, to make it harder for cities and towns to have to try to deal with opting out. The tax issue still sits. I think I included a handout to you today from Connecticut. I've already talked with you about Rhode Island saying it's going to cost 120% of anything gained through taxation on marijuana to actually implement it. And now Connecticut is indicating the same thing. And anybody who thinks 3% on $1 million, in other words, getting $30,000 is a good help for us. And you do need to know that the Yarmouth Substance Awareness Committee is opposed to any commercial operation in this community on marijuana, and they do fully support a ban. The final thing I gave you was a flyer with a piece of excitement. It's another event actually planned by the YSIAC, and it's going to take place on March 7th at 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. over at the Senior Center this time. And it is a workshop conducted by Paul Deegan, who's actually a member of the Recreation Commission, and he's a retired, or is still semi-retired professional in the field of addiction and recovery. And he's going to be leading a workshop open to the public and to community and to professionals in the community on compassion fatigue because unfortunately is part of what this massive drug problem, opioids and other drugs, and obviously now the addition of marijuana to more drug addiction into the community is going to be causing. So, everyone's invited, so you've got the circular, and you can pass it along to people. And I thank you for listening to me this evening.
Thank you, Christine. Is there any, Sharon?
Hi, Sharon Wymer. And I wanted to point out to you, I'm thankful for the public comment period of time, but I also wanted to point out that reading this, the open meeting law discourages public bodies from discussing topics not listed on the agenda. The public should therefore expect the board to respond to questions, or should not expect the board to respond to statements and questions. And I had to read it a few times, obviously to understand what the purpose was, to make sure we put that in the document of the agenda every week. And I do appreciate it because you have limited time and you need to speak about all your items that will appear on the agenda as listed. But for those, and one of your goals is also better communication with the community. So, I don't know how you encompass that statement with also allowing, which I assume is our right, is that certainly your discussions today of whatever the City Hall systems, the Finance Committee submission of the budget and the ATM, the warrant recommendations, the free cash, the OPEB, that discussion will be held without community impact, input because we just have this opportunity to speak. So, I just wanted to be clear that next week, we could make comments about that, even though it's not going to appear on the agenda. So, I don't know if you're following all that, but I think one way to foster good communication might be another line in that thing that, you know, we welcome public comment, which I think you do, but you obviously are in a time crunch and want to get things done. So, that's number one. So, I'd love to get an assurance that that's correct, but I know you can't comment on my comments, so.
Well, I can comment briefly.
Okay.
The open meeting law prevents us from having discussion and actually come to a resolution or to anything that's not given public notice in advance. So, it's so that you know what we're going to discuss, you have the opportunity to know about it, to come talk about it in advance of the meeting. It is kind of difficult. I understand what you're saying because we can't have a free flow of conversation, which would be very helpful. But we do have that during any type of hearing. Most of our fees or any decisions that we make usually are in a hearing setting, and we do allow public comment where we can discuss it at that point in time.
Right.
So, basically, our hands are tied in terms of us being able to have dialogue.
Right.
You can to some extent, but you can't deliberate, shall I say, on something that the public hasn't been given prior notice on.
Right. And it's difficult for us as community members to then speak on issues in advance of learning things from the people that are responsible for all of the things I just listed. And it doesn't give us an opportunity to participate in that discussion, and the only way I can see that it happens is the next meeting to bring up what was said and what was, and I assume you're wanting that input because it, one of your goals is to better communicate with the public. So, I'm making assumptions, but.
No, no, obviously, we, I think, you know, we're here to represent the people. So, for us to do business in a vacuum doesn't do anybody any good. We have instituted some policies that try to help that, having two fee hearings, two hearings, so that way people can listen to the information and contact us before we make a vote. But if you have any suggestions that wouldn't violate open meeting law, I mean, certainly we're open to it. To have, we have, you know, our agendas are usually pretty packed.
Right.
So, to have a dialogue on every agenda item would be very time-consuming.
And I appreciate that, having.
But I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah. At some point, I may want to make a comment or two based on what was said in this meeting that I didn't have the ability to speak to. The other comment I would like to make, it must be very difficult for you as a board to try to maintain civility. I'm not sure I'm describing it well, but I don't think disparaging remarks should be made about staff members, and I'm sitting in the audience, and I don't believe in that. It may not be part of, directly part of open meeting law, but it's certain, I don't know if you have your own policy. I think you do, and whether it falls under that. But I appreciate and applaud you, Tracy, as the chairwoman, having been very successful in stopping someone to do that. I don't understand why someone feels that they should do that in a public setting. It's totally inappropriate from my point of view and from sitting and hearing it in the audience as well. So, I appreciate your efforts in that respect. I truly hope that all your committees don't speak of people, and so I would like to make that comment as well.
Well, thank you, Sharon. It is difficult. I think all of us that sit in the board, much like those that are here tonight, have a care and a love for our community, so sometimes it's hard not to take it personal. And there's a balance between somebody having the right to speak and express themselves. And our employees, you know, they're public employees, so.
Right.
But it's a balance of respect, and whether we have a policy or not, I have my own personal feelings and, you know, I try to balance it with the person having the right to express themselves, and we can do it in a more respectful way.
Right. And having an objective conversation does not mean a subjective point of view to individuals or personalities. It's just not appropriate in my mind, and I appreciate your stance, Tracy, on not allowing that to happen.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to address the board? Joe?
Joe Goldstein, West Yarmouth. I'm actually speaking today as chairman of the Finance Committee.
Joe, I'll stop you right there if you're going to speak on behalf of the Finance Committee.
No, I.
The Finance Committee.
It's just an announcement. I'm not advocating.
Okay, because they have a.
No, no, I know, and they have time next week, and they're going to, and you'll, they have a fine presentation that I'm sure you'll appreciate. No, this is to announce that we're seeking applicants for the position within the Finance Committee. We believe we're having, will be having a resignation in very soon, and I want to just ask all the residents, those that are interested in volunteering. It's a very good committee, very active. If you listen next week, you'll hear about it, and that's really all I wanted to say.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hopefully, people will come forward. That'd be great. Joyce.
Good evening. Joyce Flynn from South Yarmouth. Just three quick things. Everybody who was in the room just before the pledge has gotten one of these. Cape Light Compact has a new incentive program for residences for 2018. And we also, if you're a small business, small business defined in electric terms, that you use less than 60,000 kilowatt-hours a year in your business, no matter how many months of the year you're open. With that small business offer, you get 80% off all your electric upgrades. So, it's huge. It works if you're seasonal, it works if you're not seasonal and you use 5,000 or under kilowatt-hours most months. So, that should fit a lot of small businesses. The trick is that you would have to be in the business audit queue by May 28th, but the truth is, the business audit queue, because we're so residence-heavy in Yarmouth, is usually much shorter than the residents' queue, which some people can tell you is rather long. The second thing I'd like to say is that there are more of these upstairs. So, they're right under the notice of the yard sale for the Historical Society, March 10th, and they'll be on that table. In general renewable energy, I'd like to express my support for Vineyard Wind. And to say that, I think when we talk about underwater cables, we shouldn't forget that we already have five underwater cables running from the Cape, three to Martha's Vineyard and two to Nantucket. And there have not been environmental problems with those. But I am not an environmental expert. So, what I would point out is that the state is in charge of citing, and the state has many specialists who are doing all the environmental reviews for all of these proposals. As Barnstable said in its letter that it put in the Vineyard Wind file, there are issues to be worked out. And Barnstable has signed a letter negotiating a host agreement. So, I think right now they're in a slightly better position than we are if Vineyard Wind is chosen as the one of the three proposals that are out there to get the best deal for its host community. I remember back with Cape Wind, we certainly had our ducks in a row for host community, whether anyone was for Cape Wind or opposed to Cape Wind. And I urge the selectmen to get in there before this decision comes in April because if Vineyard Wind wins this, we will be in a better condition for Yarmouth for having brokered a host community agreement that gives us what we want. And I feel for the residents around Lewis Bay, and I strongly suggest that some of the money that would come to the town for Cape Wind might be used to mitigate the algae problems in Lewis Bay, although we all know that we have to do more with septic. Then finally, I'd just like to say, as someone who's in a butter at the other end of town with something that's having a public information meeting tomorrow, the construction plans for a new school, I appreciate when groups like Vineyard Wind and the schools keep local residents who will be most affected by temporary construction in the loop. And that's really helpful. And I realize that what we think of as residents for something that's going to disrupt our street for a while is different from the larger issue of community, where we have to think about the whole town, the whole district, the whole two-town district, the whole Cape, and, you know, the definition of community gets much bigger when you start to talk about environmental things. So, I guess I just urge you to broker a good agreement for the town and define community largely, not just in space, but also in time, because all those young people who might get jobs out of this and who might have more shoreline for their kids to play on if we get our electricity from a renewable source will thank you 25 years from now. Thanks.
Thank you, Joyce. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the board? Kurt?
I'll try to make this brief because I know Paul gets paid by the hour back there. I have some questions, some of Jeff Colby's questions, and I have talked to him and gotten some answers. The HMOD residential change, I don't know if you guys have caught on that they're talking about raise and replace versus remodel. I think we've reached a point where we don't need any more strictly residential conversions of motel properties, whether they be raise and replace or remodel job. So, I think as you look forward to whether to recommend or not, you need to consider that because it's, again, it's giving up more business-owned property for residential use, which we know is already a problem. The last project that came through, you had two votes against it already. I think it'd be a waste of time to propose any more projects like that with fractured support from the Board of Selectmen already. Another question people keep asking about is the Union Street bog is just being left to die. I've been told there's a water pollution problem under the bog. I don't know if that's true or not. And if it is true, why we don't know more about what's going on with that water that could potentially be polluted. Apparently, we're giving, pretty much giving away the rest of the bogs in town to a grower, and yet he's done nothing with this particular bog. So, maybe the way that's bid out needs to be changed. I don't know what the solution is, but it would be nice to know what the story is on that. And another thought, and I don't, have you heard anything on the Route 6A improvements lately? I don't see anything publicly.
If you, if you don't mind, Madam Chairman. On Friday, this Friday, March 2nd, we are anticipating proposals from our on-call engineering services companies that we solicited to begin the process of selecting a firm to assist us with that long-term planning for this board.
Because another thought I've had, and maybe, I don't want to say I'm exaggerating, but it just seems like the water department spends a lot of time on Route 6A fixing leaks. And I would think it would be smart to tie in water main improvements with, before the roadway improvements get done.
That is part of the grant.
So, I hope that's being considered at the same time. I have an OPEB question, which hopefully Ed will answer tonight, is about, you know, how are we doing with current liabilities? Are they being funded? I know there's some catch-up, but, you know, how are we doing with the current liabilities? And I guess that's it for tonight.
Thank you, Kurt. Good points. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the board? Seeing nobody, we will go to our 6:15 public hearing, and I'll turn it over to the chairman.
Thank you. The applicant for new annual all-alcohol license for 431 Main LLC, One Businesses Grill 43. Good evening.
Good evening.
Attorney Tardif, how are you tonight?
Well, how are you?
Good, thank you. Do you want to introduce the fellows with you, please?
I sure do. Seated with me is Charles Connor, who's sitting in the middle, and Stephen Barone. They're the principals of 43 Main LLC. And they are the applicants for the issuance of a new alcohol, all-alcohol liquor license for the property at 43 Route 6A, which was formerly the Primavera Restaurant.
Okay. We'll read the legal ad into the record, and then you can proceed.
Great.
The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority for the town of Yarmouth, has received an application for a new annual all-alcohol restaurant license and weekday and Sunday entertainment licenses from 43, from 43 Main LLC, DBA Grill 43, Stephen A. Barone, Jr., manager. The premise is a two-story building with five dining areas, bar, kitchen, and restrooms with two entrances and four exits totaling 1,782 square feet, located at 43 Route 6A, Yarmouth Port, Massachusetts. Entertainment will consist of recorded and live music with up to three pieces and amplification. Hearing will be held on Tuesday, February 27, 2018, in the hearing room at the Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth. The Board of Selectmen meeting begins at 6:00 p.m. Written comments will be accepted until 4:30 p.m. Friday, February 23, 2018. In the selectman's office at Town Hall, verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing. Okay.
Thank you. As I indicated, this is the old Primavera Restaurant, which closed in, I believe it was November. And so, these gentlemen came forward as possible, as a possibility for reopening that. Mr. Barone, who's seated at the end over here, is the proposed manager. He meets all the requirements pursuant to the statute. As you can also see from his resume, he has worked in the restaurant business for the last four years, the last two with Ocean House Restaurant as the bar manager. He has his tips training, and there's a copy of that certification in the packet. Grill 43 is going to be based on Mr. Connor's current restaurant, which is the Rock Harbor Grill in Orleans, which is basically a casual restaurant with some really upscale food. You have a copy of the menu in there, there's a full menu and a full gluten-free menu as well. It's not going to be a bar, it's just going to be a restaurant. Some of the requests tonight. You have a copy of the menu in there, there's a full menu and a full gluten-free menu as well. It's not going to be a bar, it's just going to be a restaurant. Some of the requests tonight, we just merely requested what the last restaurant had. I don't believe there's going to be a lot of time or energy put into the entertainment we have. We'd like to have it if we need it, but I don't think it's going to be used quite a bit. The same hours are being requested as on the last liquor license and entertainment licenses. I don't think there were any problems with the last, meaning incidents with either alcohol or overcrowding or parking. They've already met with Officer Magnuson, set up that meeting and met with him already. We've already been through the Zoning Board of Appeals for the transfer of the special permit that allows this use in that zoning district. They're going to continue to use the valet service that they, that has been very successful for the last, geez, I want to say 13, 14 years. So I don't think there's going to be any significant change at all. The menu's a little bit different, but that's about it. So they understand that they're in a residential zone. They understand that their neighbors live there, live very close by. They've already reached out to some of them and met a couple people, have come over to say hello. I know there's maybe one or two here in the audience as well. So they want to make it work, they want to make it right for the restaurant, they also want to make it right for the neighborhood. So based on that information, we believe the authority should issue the liquor license as well as the entertainment licenses.
Thank you. Just so you know, in our packet, we do have the email from Officer Magnuson to Linda Hill, our licensing clerk, indicating that he met with both Mr. Connor and Mr. Barone on February 19th. He indicates both had extensive food and beverage experience and that the, he reviewed with them the Yarmouth rules and regulations, as well as some state law and regulations, and told them about the upcoming YEPD compliance seminar and the Yarmouth Restaurant Association Alcohol Awareness Seminar. And he says that both of them are well-informed and capable. So that's good. We got a favorable letter there. I see also in the file that the same number of seats is going to be as was with the Primavera.
Correct.
And Bruce Murphy has some inspections and certificates that have to be obtained before he signs off. Finally, Fire Department notes that the amplification may require an upgrade to the fire alarm system. So that's got to be dealt with.
Okay.
And the ZVA, you said you've already done that one.
Correct.
I've reviewed the, all the documentation, seems to be in good order. I'll go to the public and into the board. Is there anyone in the public that would like to be heard on this matter? Tom, you want to come forward?
Good evening, everyone. Tom DeCannell with the Yarmouth Chamber of Commerce. And we would just like to wholeheartedly endorse these gentlemen for taking on this major undertasking. The north side is very treasurable to Yarmouth. It's one of our oldest sites, and those folks up there need a nice, quick place to get a nice meal. So with that, we wish you many, many plates and good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else? Okay, I'll go to the board. Eric, do you have any questions?
I saw wagyu beef, and that was all I needed. That's it. Thank you.
Tom?
The only question I have, and it's just from previous information that was probably in the newspaper, was I guess the predecessor business had some difficulty with taxes, and I don't even recall what the details of that were, but I'm wondering how this corporation relates to the previous corporation, or if it's totally independent. Did you buy any of the, did you buy any of the corporate assets or anything of that nature?
Nothing, no connection whatsoever. The taxes that you refer to actually were New York State taxes, not Massachusetts taxes.
Oh, really? All right.
These gentlemen have no connection whatsoever with the prior owner. Prior owner is gone. If there were any assets to purchase, he left them. The property owner is a local gentleman and is their landlord now, so.
Okay, so the owner of the property has been the owner all along?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, since it was Lyric.
Okay.
Right.
As I understand, Paul, the owner is a real estate trust, and that's totally separate and apart from the Primavera restaurant business. And the only thing you have in common is you're both leasing from the same landlord.
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay.
That's fine. Good.
Tracy?
I have a question.
Mark?
Just a, sort of a procedural item here. I noted this email from Ann Maxwell Hill and John Meredith Hill, and I just wanted to draw that to your attention. Is that something that should be read into the record at all?
No, is it in the, I didn't see it.
Everybody should have that copy in their file.
Sure.
It's part of that. It came into us very late. They apparently live in Pennsylvania.
Okay.
Got their butters notice, and it came late today, so you include it in the packet.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't in the email packet.
Wasn't in the email packet, that's correct.
All right, yeah, I'll read this, and thanks, Mark, for bringing that to my attention.
Do you want a copy?
It's an email dated February 22nd. I guess this should be in the nature of public comment, addressed to the board regarding the 83 Main Street, Route 6A. Thanks to board for soliciting comments, and said the notice only arrived yesterday at their Pennsylvania home. They bought their property at 23 Willow Street in Yarmouthport in September of 2017, and they're planning to retire there in 2019. They say thus, "The news that the new owners of the building at 43 Main Street, Route 6A, will be allowed to provide live music with amplification has us very concerned. As elderly people, we did not buy this new property in order to," quote, "rock out," close quote. On the contrary, we bought the property for its quiet surroundings. The 43 Main Street property was previously the site of the restaurant Primavera. While the vent stack at the restaurant spewed greasy smoke into the atmosphere and likely will continue to do so, we will probably not live long enough to drown in its carbon-poisoned air. Sound pollution, however, is a more immediate threat. Approving amplified music means pounding music on the patio and drunks yelling and howling into the summer nights, both a direct threat to our peace of mind as well as the value of our property. I suspect that many of our neighbors have similar concerns with this commercial property positioned smack dab in the middle of a residential neighborhood. So much for the much-ballyhooed zoning and property regulations in the Cape. We never imagined that we were using our hard-earned savings to buy into a beautiful little village, only to be subjected to the noise pollution that comes from this sort of entertainment venue. Please take our petition slash comments into consideration before you approve this petition that will change our quiet village best Ann Maxwell Hill and John Meredith Hill, 23 Willow Street in Yarmouthport, Massachusetts." Do you want to respond to that? You don't have to, but if you want to.
I mean, I can. You know, I've owned a restaurant, Rock Harbor Grill, for five years before I had the Corner Store. We're not about, I mean, we don't even have entertainment in Orleans. We're about good times, great food, good conversation. It's not about alcohol. It's about, alcohol can be part of your, you know, your evening, but it's not going to be the center of your, of the evening. It's just a great place to have food. You know, we had no plans of actually having entertainment. We decided to ask for it. We don't know what the winter's going to bring, perhaps, you know, Sunday afternoon we need to draw some customers in, you know, maybe a two-piece band. You know, we don't even need amplified music. You know, first of all, we have to get to know the area. I'm from, you know, Chatham, Harwich, and Orleans, so we're very excited to be in your neighborhood. I don't know you, all of you, that well, and I'm excited to get to know you. You know, I've been in this business in this area for like 25 years. I was the Food and Beverage Director at Chatham Bars in, the second in charge of a closet. If I don't take care of the locals surrounding our business, we will not have a business. If someone complains about music, which I'm 100% sure that will not happen, we'll turn it off. You know, our restaurant, our place is, you know, usually 10:30, 11 o'clock, you know, we're done. You know, a couple people may sit at the bar, we never ask them to leave, they can leave when they're ready, but we're not a bar. We are a restaurant. We don't allow shots at our restaurant. You know, we're not that kind of venue. But again, though, if we don't take care of our locals, especially the people who live in the area, we're not going to have a successful business.
Correct. And just to point out, and just to point out in reference to the email, we actually don't have a patio where there will be music or food or drink being served.
Okay, so it's pretty much the same configuration as there is right now. There's not going to be any additions or anything like that.
No.
I think our noise bylaw states the rules, the parameters of which you need to live in, which means that needs to be contained to the inside of your facility.
Correct. And I believe it's 10:00 PM.
Any other questions, Mark, from you?
No.
Thanks for bringing that to my attention, I appreciate it. Anyone else on the board? We have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone like to make a motion on this application?
We'll make a motion. We approve the application as presented, in making sure that all the recommendations or requirements that, the building and health, et cetera, are met.
Building, I think health and fire were in the file.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. You're all set with us. Wish you good luck with the restaurant, and I'm sure you'll do a fine job.
Thank you.
On a night that I don't want to rock out, I'll be over.
I think that's the only licensing matter we have, Madam Chair, so I return the meeting back to you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, City Hall Systems Review. Hello?
Good evening, everybody.
That's rough guard. Sorry.
I just have some exciting updates regarding the Town Clerk's Office and Beach and Disposal sticker sales. So we've been streamlining the process of Beach and Disposal sticker sales and other purchases through City Hall Systems, and this is an update from our summer presentation on a high level. Selling stickers is a one-point, $6 million business, and so I'm always looking for ways to streamline and automate, and through City Hall Systems, this is something that I've been, I've been doing. And it's also, I'm able to meet some of your goals, stream, meeting great expectations in customer service, excellence in customer service, as well as doing this all within my own budget with almost no cost. So moving along, the goal with City Hall Systems in review is customer and staff simplicity. We're taking eight systems and moving them down to one system at no software cost. So you'll see below tax and water bill scholarships, that's through a vendor and a software program, MCC, MCC, Munis, Bonzi, another vendor that we, a vendor that we use for Beach and Disposal sticker purchases, dog licenses, another vendor. And on to other vendors that we use, some are homegrown, some are we purchase. And in review, through City Hall Systems, what we talked about in August is customers, it's amazon.com for municipalities. You're able to make multiple purchases and put them in a shopping cart. And you're able to, a customer can manage payments from one login account, offers a shopping cart, as I just said, provides historical payment and bill info, and assists with taxpayer questions through a call center, email, and a chat feature. And then so status to date, the goals that we've met. You can purchase, you can pay your taxes through City Hall Systems, real estate, personal property, boat and motor vehicle excise, your utility billing, water, municipal lien certificates, your scholarship donations, you can order birth, death, and marriage certificates online. We, and this is a wonderful thing in my office, you can use credit cards finally, and it's a one-stop shop online in the call center. So what we've recently announced and what we're announcing today and delivered for the past month, you can purchase your Beach and Disposal stickers and your shellfish licenses, yay. And we've eliminated handwritten forms, so stickers and receipts now printed in one step. We're saving 94 hours handwriting license plate numbers on the stickers themselves, on 17,000 stickers. So this is a wonderful thing. We can just simply print out the numbers on the sticker themselves. And then you can order online, you can, you can phone order your stickers as well. Other efficiency changes, so for online mail-in and phone-in orders, City Hall Systems will print and mail stickers. For walk-in orders, if you come to the counter, we'll print and give the stickers as receipts. Beach stickers now go on the front, on the inside, on the windshield, inside the car on the windshield, where the dump sticker used to go. So, and that's a great thing, because it'll prevent, you know, usually we see, we see very few numbers, but, you know, kids or thieves will peel stickers off one car and try to put them on theirs and erase the number. It's not a big number of it, but it does happen. So it's good to get those stickers on the inside windshield. Videos are available, tutorials. If you go to the Town Clerk's website, you'll see how you can purchase your Beach and Disposal stickers, your shellfish licenses, all online. So a lot of tutorials to help our customers and our citizens, you know, understand what exactly they're doing. Tutorials on what City Hall Systems is, the vendor, how to do an online, how to create an online account. Videos as well for elderly exemption applications. So resulting staffing adjustments, the clerk's staff was reduced by one with a retirement included in the FY '18 budget. Our workload is increasing, especially now with the FOIA requirements, the Freedom of Information Act, changes in the laws. We have to make sure we can efficiently fulfill requests for public information within a stricter time limit, which is great for the citizens. With the new HR director coming, the collector treasurer will assist with our clerk's payroll, our bills, and most importantly, our busy season with election cycles and busy season with sticker sales. And then getting the word out, advertising this, the bill payer help and notice for change. So we've had workshop training in Town Hall for this conversion, online and in-town documentation, email blasts to all current users, in-bill notices on Channel 18, the website, videos, as I mentioned. The census is a bit late this year, because we wanted, I wanted to include an insert regarding the changes with Beach and Disposal sticker and City Hall Systems, being able to phone in your order, being able to order online and mail in. There's a $5 discount if you do those things. And then so the next steps with City Hall Systems, dog licenses, so the town is testing now, and we're testing now, and we'll be rolling that out soon. Integration with the financial management system, streamline our reconciliation process that's ongoing. Printing birth, death, and marriage certificates through this system, processing marriage intentions, other items, and then other items for, to automate, we'll work on. In the fall, the Harbor Master and other departments for non-complex payments will be utilizing City Hall Systems. And then questions? I thank you.
Excellent, Phil. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Mark?
No.
Mike?
Phil, on the online orders, is that something where you'll actually get somebody live on the other end of the phone, or is that some kind of voice activation system?
No, you get someone live on the other end of the phone. So if you're having trouble ordering online, or you're inquiring about the status of what you've ordered, you're going to get someone live.
Phil, just for clarification, if you don't mind, is that somebody live in the United States or in?
Live in the States, live in Hopetale, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Ingo speaking?
Yes.
Norm?
No, I've had experience with the system already, and it's working great.
Eric?
Is it up and running?
It's up and running. Welcome you guys all to use it.
All right.
Fees and surcharges versus discounts, you charging service charge or fees to compensate for the mailing and the credit card fees?
So the software to us, it's free. City Hall System charges 2.95% for using your debit or your credit card. However, if you use, if you pay by check or your EF debit or your credit card. However, if you use, if you pay by check or your EFT account, that's free.
So how are you compensating for the?
Well, when you get that $5 discount, you know, it'll be a wash when you purchase your stickers.
So there is a line item that is a service charge?
Yeah. And the citizens are, you know, you get warned, and if you come and purchase, well, even, you know, if you decide to purchase over the counter, there's no discount, but staff reminds the customer, there's a charge if you choose to pay with that, with that card.
All right, that's all. Thank you. Sideburns?
I used it last time, and it worked out very well, but this time, when I went to log in, I'm not sure if the system was down. It told me that I wasn't registered. Then I registered, got the link, clicked on the link, and it wouldn't do it. So I don't know if the system was down last week.
I'll check it out for you, Tracy.
Yeah.
It was up and running, but I'll check it out for you.
I was just trying to get my accountant, my excise tax bills. I need all the write-offs I can get, Phil.
Okay.
It's too late.
All I can do it.
But I'm extremely excited for this, and I appreciate all the hard work that you've done in moving this forward. I think we're really advanced in terms of some of the other towns on the Cape and making sure that you can do it from home. Do you have kiosks here to?
We will be having, we will be installing kiosks in the future to help, for people that aren't familiar with the system, if they come in, they're welcome to use it. We'll show them how to use the system. We'll show them how to create an account, and that's upcoming.
It'll be interesting to see when you do your mailing with the census. So I assume that the people will be notified far in advance before the dump stickers are going to, you know, before they're due.
Yeah.
So when you have your heavy time, this will be probably the first chance to see how many people, because I know usually there's an extremely long line around that time, how it works out.
That's right, correct, yeah. So, yeah, we're looking to, we want to eliminate those long lines, so by implementing these solutions, you know, being able to, the mere fact that you can call in and order, you don't need to order it online, you can just call a 508 number, and if you have your, if you have a check with you, you can purchase it for that amount.
And the security?
They're PCI compliant.
It is, okay, good. So people that don't even have a computer at home are still able to do it with the telephone?
Sure, they're still able to do it, correct.
Excellent. Thank you, Phil.
One more question.
Oh, go ahead.
I just want a clarification. If somebody walks in, Phil, and uses a credit card or debit card, is the service charge the 2.95%, or is there some flat fee for that?
It's a 2.9, it's that.
So it's just a pass-on in terms of what they're charging you?
Yeah, a $1 minimum. Yes.
Yeah, but they're also paying more for the license in person as well.
Right.
Well, they're paying more, they're not getting a discount?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
I should say it that way. It's all in the wording.
Yeah.
Yep.
They're not really being charged more, they're just not getting the discount because they're using the service, right?
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thanks.
Next item we have is Finance Committee's submission of the budget and ATM warrant recommendations of the Board of Selectmen.
Can you pack it? You should have a listing of recommendations by the Finance Committee?
Okay. And the Finance Committee is going to be at our next meeting?
They are. There's a hearing scheduled, capital budget, and then finance for the operating budget.
I just have to say, I think this year it was a little bit backwards, because some of the things they discussed before we had the ability to even discuss it, some of the things that were put before them, like the electronic voting, for instance. Dan Horgan and I had a conversation about it, but it got presented to them. We didn't get a chance to even have a.
Well, because that was a free cash ask, and they were seeing free cash before it comes to you.
Yeah, I mean, this board hasn't even had a conversation about those items, so just, I think in the past, we've had a conversation about them to even make sure we wanted to forward them or advance them to the Finance Committee, just for future years. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Or we're gonna, I mean, we have the opportunity next week to ask them directly.
I mean, if they're coming in next week, I'll hold my questions to them.
They'll be here on March 6th.
Yeah, remember, March 6th starts at 5:00 PM, too.
All right. Okay, and then we have the free cash and OPEB discussion. Good evening.
Good evening. Ed Santio, Finance Director. You have the free cash list draft in front of you, and I'm not going to go over that as a presentation, but if you had any questions, you can ask those questions, or, again, that could be part of the budget hearing as well.
Well, I guess I'm going to make my comment about your memo that was sent to the, I guess, Finance Committee, Jeff, about the building. I know that the memo states that there was a consensus of the board, and I'm going to go on record in saying that that's not my particular position. I don't know if it was a consensus, but I think that the debt drop-off should be not for the DPW facility this year and should go to Matices. And I think that we need to be sure that we secure the Matices facility. And so I just want to go on the record, because I read the memo, and I know there were some members that talked about it, but I'm not really sure that we took a vote on that.
There is no Matices payment in FY '19.
No, I understand that, but I'd like to see.
So the debt drop-off the year after could be used for Matices. It doesn't go away or disappear, because the payments for the DPW facility, that's a one-time for the engineering and design services. Once that's paid for, and it's paid for through free cash and the debt drop-off, that then becomes available for other spending in FY 2020.
Right, but that wasn't the discussion that we had. The discussion that we had was that the debt drop-off would be used for those payments going forward, if I remember correctly.
The debt drop-off was initially going to be used to cover the design.
And then transferred to the payment for the debt.
That's an option, but it's not definite until you vote in FY '20.
Okay, good, perfect. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Certainly.
I do have a question. Free cash, you know, I don't want to nitpick the list, but I guess the, you know, $420,000 we're contributing to golf sticks out to me. And, you know, it has been this board's policy not to use free cash for recurring expenses. So what guarantee do we have that this isn't going to happen again?
I think there's going to be a presentation and discussion on March 6th as it relates to golf. So there's a team of people that Dan has assembled to try to make sure this is a one-time, only situation.
You know, I know that Dan's doing the best he can trying to get by in this budget year, but I think that this goes, and of course, it's going to go to town meetings, so it's ultimately up to the town, but the town has made it very clear that they wanted the enterprise and golf to be self-sustaining and not come from the general budget. So unless, you know, hopefully we can make a plan where we can get ourselves self-funded again and pay this money back as part of that, I don't think I'd support paying it. I think we're going to have to make some drastic decisions, and I think we're going to have to do it soon, because I think.
And we have indicated that this would be a loan, and there are, you know, we can get into it in March, but there are other funding sources. So if you believe that this actually does contribute to tourism and economic development, then we do also have tourism preservation funds. So there are alternatives to this funding source if you choose to use a different funding source.
There'll be on the sixth options available to consider. That would involve decisions much like Ed had just mentioned, and including other options that we're exploring. All of it's going to take some time to work through, but everything's on the table, and the golf operation knows that.
Tracy, kind of, one more question?
Yeah?
And again, Ed, if this is going to come up on the sixth, please let me know so we don't do it twice. I was just curious as to why such a small contribution to stabilization and a significant contribution to capital stabilization?
That was, you know, kind of a suggestion, mine, based on the fact that hopefully the economy keeps on ticking along, and the capital needs are going to hit us sooner, potentially than will a decrease in the economy. But, you know, a shifting of that money, you know, I'd be fine with that.
Does the $50,000 get us to the $3 million, and does that make us eligible for the AAA bond rating?
You know, that alone won't, what hit us before was the economy and the fact that our stabilization levels are lower than the other AAA communities. Just to give you an idea of where we are with stabilization, we're currently at, excuse me, $3,022,245. So we've met the goals set forth, or that we gave to S&amp;P as it related to getting a AA-plus rating. In addition to the $50,000, there's a repayment from the fire department from stabilization of $100,000. So the projection without any additional accrued interest is that we would have $3.3172,245 in stabilization. Again, as we discussed when we looked at our 10-year plan, if we have a dramatic decrease in the economy, that doesn't get us through a two-year, you know, deep dip in, say, motor vehicle excise or rooms and meals tax. So, you know, I'd love to have more, but it's just a feeling that maybe the capital needs are going to hit us, like the Matices Middle School, perhaps the DPW building would hit us first. But, you know, be happy to change that if you like.
So you don't think that having nearly $4 million in stabilization in and of itself is enough to get us to that AAA?
We need probably six, seven.
So, okay.
I mean, but we have a case to make, so we've actually strategized on the case we'd make for AAA. So, for example, I went to InfoUSA, got the income and asset levels of the second homeowners, because what they're looking at is the income levels of our primary residents, which are lower than many of the other AAA communities. So we've done some of those types of things to try to make a better case for the things that, and we had a pre-meeting with S&amp;P, just to get their feelings on where we would be, given that the economy changed. So we kind of understand where they might try to indicate that we're deficient. But, you know, large stabilization balance will offset, you know, any of those criticisms that they might have.
Those were my two questions.
Norm, did you have questions?
Not really at this point. Are you going to talk about OPEB or?
I was going to get into OPEB after your questions, and they're intermingled because we're allocating free cash to OPEB.
That's fine. I'll pass at this point.
Okay, Mike?
Just two quick things, Ed. I know that you're coming in with a separate presentation on golf, but regardless of where that money comes from, whether it comes from free cash or some other source, is the plan, and I don't want you to go through the details twice, I can wait for it to be unfolded in front of the board, but is this going to be a one-time payment in terms of the plan with some kind of strategy to stop the bleeding at that point, or is it going to be open-ended or ongoing in terms of golf being subsidized, to use a lack of a better term, from free cash or other sources going forward?
I guess that's based on the desires of the Board of Selectmen. So, you know, we kind of have a basic, basically, I think, three main strategies that perhaps we can talk about on the sixth. You know, depends on what you think about this as a recreational opportunity, what you think about this as an economic driver. Does that merit, you know, having some subsidy? Perhaps it does, perhaps it doesn't. That's your decision. And then there are others where, you know, it's, you know, kind of trying to rescue it, but under no circumstance or plan is there a conscious decision, unless the board decides to do it, that we would, you know, knowingly try to subsidize this unless you decide that you want to do that because it's a recreational opportunity, or because it's an economic driver for the town. But that's your decision.
The other question I had, just by way of comparison, you said that to get to a AAA rating in terms of the stabilization, you'd be talking six or seven million. Dennis' average AAA, don't they, rating?
They do, and their reserves in a smaller community is, I think, I have to look at the numbers, but it's greater than ours.
It's greater than ours?
It's greater than ours, in a smaller community.
So it's the scale, in terms of the size of the community? So, in other words, Dennis wouldn't necessarily need to attain that same figure to get a AAA rating?
Yeah, so what the GFOA, we've talked about this in the past, has said, that you should have two months of reserves for stabilization. So, you know, and that's a fairly large number. And then what we've done is, our first step is to have stabilization based on non-school expenditures, but our total budget includes paying for the school. So, you know, I think they would look at the entire budget. So we've taken the first step to go from a AA-minus to a AA-plus, a two-step jump in our bond rating, to take that next step, particularly, I think, because they're very cautious, and, you know, part of the discussion actually relates to OPEB and our contingent liabilities. So it's not just what our debt is, it's not just what our reserves are, it's also what our contingent liabilities are, you know, what our funding strategies are for wastewater, because they actually talked to us about that in the pre-discussion or pre-rating meeting that we had this past summer. So we have to have the entire package put together, and then we have to have arguments for why, you know, with the lower incomes of some of our residents versus the other towns or communities, and our lower average property values, why we would merit a AAA. So, and we have some strategies that we would offer, that I think are some of the out-of-the-box types of ways to approach it, you know, with, you know, the large rental housing that we have. You know, are we going to take the incomes of the folks that are renting it, or are we going to take the incomes of the property owners? So I think there are some different ways that we can slice this that may put us in favorable light, even if we have stabilization balances that are below the ideal, and we're going to have to try that out as soon as we do our first bond offering.
So it'd be two months of expenses, including the schools?
Yes.
Would be what they'd be looking for?
That's correct.
On that piece, and I understand there's other pieces to it.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mark?
I don't have any questions.
Norm?
Coming back to the golf question, I was quickly trying to locate the amount of debt service in the schedules that we have in front of us. Can you tell me what the debt service is for the fiscal 2019?
For golf or for the entire?
For golf.
I think it's, I can look it up. I think it's around the $300,000.
So it's in, it is in here someplace?
Yes, it's in the.
Now I see it, $287,000. Okay. So, of the $364, $287,000 is debt service.
Sure.
So, is there any possibility of rolling that?
So we did a refunding.
Okay.
Several years back. So this is going to drop off, and then we're going to be bringing on the $2 million worth of debt service. So we've, what we have is temp debt. This debt will be rolling off in two or three years, I think. And then what we're going to do is, we're going to, utilizing that drop-off, start funding the $2 million. So, you know, delaying the payment is what you're saying, so that we don't have to pay?
Well, I guess what I'm really saying is, among the options that we might want to consider would be rolling the debt service from the current year into the future financing that we had planned, the $2 million, which essentially gets to the same point.
We could loan the golf department $300,000, and then they could pay us back that debt service later, and that's essentially kind of what we're offering, which is a loan to the golf department. And they would hopefully pay us back. We could call it debt service, we could call it whatever you like in the line items.
Right, but the $2 million is going to be, that's a formalized loan document, is it not?
No, it's a temporary borrowing at this point in time, so we haven't gone out to permanent borrowing, and that's some of the flexibility that we have, that. permanent borrowing, and that's some of the flexibility that we have that perhaps we'll outline on the sixth or, but, you know, we have some flexibility because we haven't long-term borrowed the $2 million.
Okay. In addition to the debt service, I believe there's $150,000 of capital items in the budget.
That's for lease payments for their carts.
So again, if you add the two, you got $440,000.
Okay.
And I guess what I'm suggesting is the possibility of one additional option might be instead of borrowing $2 million, borrow $2,400,000.
Certainly, but we, but the debt payments...
It accomplishes paying back, if you will, the general fund for the $400,000 that's in this current year.
We'd have to, you know, in terms of the debt, you can't borrow to pay debt service, first of all, but you could borrow to actually either purchase the carts instead of lease them. So we would suspend our lease and then purchase the carts. Or we could borrow from ourselves, which is pretty much what we're doing now.
Yeah.
So there are ways to look at it, but, you know, there will be some type of loan to the golf department.
Right, okay, okay.
Wouldn't it take town meeting vote to exceed the $2 million?
Probably would.
Or you just do another loan for the lease? And then you can roll together small loans in one loan offering?
Debt consolidation. I'm not suggesting that as a long-term solution.
Absolutely.
I don't think we want to get in the habit of rolling debt. You know, I think we have to look toward a long-term solution.
And that's what we're working on, the long-term solution.
I have had some experience with this sort of thing previously in Vermont.
So have I.
We had a municipal golf course that was sold to the community based on economic projections that were created when golf was at its peak.
Right.
And it made an awful lot of sense, based on those projections, that the golf course was going to pay for itself and through guest revenues principally.
The golf department in a continually down, I was looking at the history of golf and the number of golf course closures and the number of golf courses that are underwater and being foreclosed on, you know, our golf department has performed, you know, fairly well since the start of the decline, not having to, you know, start to draw on the town's funds. But I look all across the country, and I see that the golf industry is in a lot of trouble. We've heard from experts, though, that they're fairly bullish on, you know, the Boston metropolitan area and the Cape Cod area, but, you know, it's still a tough climate. We've looked at it, there are 51 golf courses, you know, within, you know, the, within Cape Cod and the island. So, I mean, there's some fairly intense competition as well that makes it difficult, but, you know, I think, I think Dan and others that he's brought to the table have some ideas that may be able to help us out with this situation.
What I wanted to get to was that the solution that we previously arrived at in Vermont was that recognizing that the golf course was constructed primarily as an economic development asset for the benefit of the lodging and tourism, not lodging, but for the tourism industry. And we had the use of a 1% add-on to sales taxes, lodging, liquor, food sales in the community. And because it was a recreational community, those funds were pretty substantial. We likewise have that same opportunity, and we provide a substantial amount of money to the Chamber of Commerce from those funds. You know, and I think that we certainly have to look at that allocation as a potential temporary use for the golf course, given the fact that the golf course is a substantial benefit for the recreational and tourism businesses.
And bringing up the Tourism Preservation Fund is based on your comments about that same thing over the past.
Thank you.
OPEB? The easy one?
I don't know about that.
Can you believe that? All right, so you can go over OPEB, other post-employment benefits. We're going to go over, obviously, you all know this, but, you know, for the audiences at home and here, what OPEB is. What is the change since 2014, when you adopted your policies? But you adopted policies, but you also exceeded the policies as it relates to OPEB. You know, just a comparison between OPEB and retirement liabilities, putting them in perspective, reason for the dramatic change based on your direction and other benefits and the sustainability, I think, of how we can continue to fund OPEB based on some of the earlier funding that you've already done. So, OPEB simply is the liability as it relates to the town's share of the employee health insurance. As we discussed earlier about the bond rating, the rating agencies, when they look at debts and liabilities, they not only look at our, what we have for debt service, but they are also looking at our unfunded liabilities like retirement and OPEB as well. Just to, again, kind of give you a comparison of what retirement looks like versus OPEB, they both have an impact on our bond rating. The unfunded liability is substantially larger for the retirement, but, you know, a good chunk of money for OPEB as well. The funding for taking care of the liability is a mandated funding schedule. We don't yet have a mandate for OPEB. The estimated funding year will be in 2038 for retirement, and if we get on a 30-year schedule, it will be 2046 for OPEB. Once the retirement drop-off arrives in 2038, starting in 2039, we can actually divert the funds, some of the funds, a smaller amount, to the OPEB so it won't have an impact on our operating budget, and it will actually free up space in our operating budget. And then finally, the, or a couple of other points, $4.1 million is what we're paying over and above the pay-as-you-go for the retirement liability. And right now, based on the latest OPEB report, it's a half a million dollars for what we have to do above pay-as-you-go. The nice thing about the OPEB trust is that we can actually use that as an emergency funding source. So if we had a significantly down year, we can actually use the OPEB trust to pay our retire reliability payments. And again, the OPEB trust fund, because we control, or we control it and therefore we can use it for a funding source if we needed to in a severely down market. All right, so just looking at the change from 2014 to 2016. In 2014, we had roughly a $28 million liability currently because of our pre-funding. So, you know, when you talk to your kids about how much they're going to put in their IRA or in their 401K, you say, put that money in early, and you don't have to put as much if you were to wait later. So those people that are kind of catching up later, they're having to put a lot more of their funds into a retirement plan because they started later. If you started earlier, you have to pay a lot less money. So we started early based on your policies, so we've dramatically reduced our OPEB liability to around $17.5 million. In addition, the annual retire contribution has significantly dropped, and that goes to the element of sustainability. So we were funding the ARC in the past year at $2.1 million. That ARC has dropped to $1.5 million, making it substantially more affordable to continue to pay the ARC. And we're not obligated to. So if, again, there was a down situation, you know, if we couldn't come up with the money to fund the ARC, we're not obligated to, but because we have been doing this in the past, the actuaries took that into consideration and gave us a great discount rate. And that discount rate went from five and a quarter to seven, and that's part of why our liability went down so dramatically. So they're saying that basically you're not just paying as you go, you're actually paying ahead of schedule, so you get a better discount rate. You get to bring down your liability in your ARC at a greater level than somebody else would be able to. And we have the second highest in the Cape in terms of the discount rate. There's one other community that has a seven and a quarter because they deposit their funds with the state. We didn't have enough money at the time to be able to do that. The estimated retirement liability based on our projections are about $1.1 million. We have funding in our budget of $253,000 based on our fee generating departments, and that leaves us a much smaller amount of free cash that we have to contribute, which is $192,000, to actually continue to fund the ARC and maintain the discount rate and the trajectory that we're on. Just to kind of give you some indications of, you know, where the liabilities are, obviously you've got to follow the payrolls and the staffing numbers, and these are the, both the overall liabilities and the ARC as it relates to the departments that have over a million dollars in total liability. And obviously, the reason for the change is, I think, with the improvements that we had in the economy and the selectmen's desire to exceed the financial policies as it relates to funding the ARC, we were able to get these dramatic results. The track record from the actuaries allowed for a higher discount rate, a lower liability, and a lower ARC. And as we discussed, we now no longer have to use the amount allocated from debt drop-off to OPEB. That's been freed up for capital projects without endangering our ability to fund the ARC. We now have a modest amount, relatively speaking, of free cash compared to what we had used in prior years for OPEB, and I believe the ARC is fairly sustainable. Where in the past, it was such a large number that it may not have been sustainable into the future. And any questions? And this also gives us a much stronger case going into a meeting with S&amp;P as it relates to trying to get a AAA rating. And, you know, I keep on saying that, and we've talked about that. The reason why we want to go for a AAA rating is obviously if we're going to have to fund a school utilizing debt, if we're going to have to fund a DPW building and do other capital improvements, we want to have the highest bond rating possible so that we can drive down the interest rates that will be charged by the marketplace.
How are the interest rates right now? I mean, they're going up in terms of, how is it going to affect our tech borrowing?
Yeah, that borrowing won't affect us until 2020, so, I mean, I can't predict where that's going to be. We won't have any borrowing to do for tech in 2019, so it's a couple of years out. If I could predict that, I'd have a lot of money in the bank.
There's been at least a 1%. I mean, municipal rates were down in the 1% to 2% level.
That's correct, correct.
And they've at least bumped by one percentage point in the last six months. I mean, it's been a dramatic move.
Right.
And as the Federal Reserve continues to increase interest rates, I think we're going to see municipal rates increase fairly quickly.
And the spreads between a AA+ and a AAA are not that great now, but when the interest rates start expanding, those spreads start to widen.
That's right.
She couldn't lock in.
Is anybody have any questions on OPEB?
No.
Great presentation, Ed.
Thank you, and congratulations on your policies.
Well, thanks to Norm. Norm pushed hard for that.
Norm, for this fist bump thing.
Yes.
I just found it. We couldn't take it anymore, we just said, "Fine."
The OPEB champion.
Hey, everybody agreed. I can't take credit for that. It takes a team to do that.
We got to put you in front of the young people to tell them to do the same things with their IRs and 401Ks.
Is it credit or blame?
Thank you very much, Ed.
You never know.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next we have the Assessors ATM Article Review. Hello, Mr. Machado. How are you?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am here to discuss the elderly disabled voluntary donations for tax payments that will be on the 2018 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. When I first got here, this board asked me, are we doing what we can for elderly taxpayers on a fixed income? That coupled with the fact that our new town administrator, Dan, challenged the department division heads, come up with innovative ideas and efficiencies within our respective budgets that take into account the missions, goals, as well as key action steps, which were identified by your goals for 2018. So with that, we in the Assessors Office, we paid particular attention to the customer service, public perception-related goals, as well as the financial responsibility and efficiency. We reviewed our practices, which we do on a yearly basis, procedures, as well as looked at any new and existing legislations in order to find ways that we might be able to save money for our elderly taxpayers. With that, this year, we are proposing to adopt the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 60, Section 3D. So what is that, you might ask? That is a voluntary donation for tax payments. The objective would be to reduce the impact of tax increases to those most vulnerable in the community. This would follow up the raising of the tax exemption for low-income elderly from 500 to 1,000, which we did last year. This board supported that, brought it to the town meeting floor, and it was supported greatly, and we thank you for that. This would also be no impact to the tax rate. It's completely voluntary. The contributions would be similar to the scholarship fund, or the scholarship donations. The mechanisms for doing that would include, it would be on the same insert as the scholarship fund, currently goes out in the real estate tax bill. It would be added to the City Hall systems, online system, again, like the scholarship. Yes, pay my tax bill, I want to pay my boat bill, and I'll donate $5 to the Tax Relief Fund as well as, you know, $5 to the scholarship fund. We would also produce video on how to process these, and we put it online, similar to the ones that are in place with scholarship fund. And I just wanted to mention that, you know, if anybody has had an opportunity to take a look at these videos, this has been kind of a collaborative effort throughout the Finance Department. Phil's office, the Clerk's office, Collector, Treasurer, Assessors, Accounting, Ed's been very helpful. These videos are out there online, we've got about a dozen to 14 of them so far. We're always looking to do more, and I think, you know, we're all very proud in the Finance Department. I think they've all done a great job. If you haven't had an opportunity to check them out, take a look at them. I think you'd be very happy with them, and I don't think you'll find this on any other town website, quite frankly, in the state. These funds would be deposited into a separate account, and they would be administered by a board which is consisting of the Chairman of the Board of Assessors and the Collector and Treasurer, and three residents which would be appointed by you, the Board of Selectmen. That is in the legislation. The rules and regulations would be adopted by this board. There are some examples in your package. Barnstable currently has one, I think there's one in there from Natick maybe, or, and we'll get you some other examples as we move forward with this. And that would be their first charge, would be to actually set the rules. That, in a nutshell, is kind of what we're proposing, and I would be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Does anybody have any questions? I think it's wonderful, Andy. I think, you know, all the work that you're doing is certainly... I think, you know, all the work that you're doing is certainly... People are grateful. And to be able to help those most in need by the other generous people of our community is just, it's just an amazing thing. So I personally am very happy with it. I like the information you gave. It gives a good outline for a committee to adopt policies and, you know, it has a lot of criteria in there because that's the biggest thing, is the criteria is how it's managed. Personally, I'm very happy with it. Anybody have any questions for Andy?
Andy, this is independent of the quote-unquote "work program"
Correct.
...that seniors are eligible for as well.
That's correct.
How much is that?
That is up to 1,000?
It's $500.
$500, $20,000, which is budgeted for the senior work-off program.
So are we having presentations at the senior center about those programs at this point?
We...
They're fully subscribed.
Oh, really? Wow.
Maybe that is something that we need to discuss as well, because we really do get something tangible for the 20,000. Perhaps we should consider, if it's fully being used now, we should consider elevating that number, I think. I know that they do a lot of work. And, you know, to Norm's point last night, he had some great points, so it should be...
I was just talking about it last night. You know, Pat Armstrong brought up the idea of, you know, some senior center effective branches with services being delivered to seniors at points away from the central senior center. And I said, it'd be great if we had volunteers doing that who could be reimbursed through their property taxes for the work that they're doing. And I know there are people, seniors out there, that are having a tough time. And so this kind of program, I think, would work very effectively. And if we could somehow increase that total availability, that would, that would be great.
And that's something we certainly can look at. And we also, I think you remember, with the senior exemption, we actually, we explained last year, we have four workshops a year to help them fill these out. And in those workshops, we go over all of the exemptions that are available to them, the tax deferral, the senior work-off, as well as the senior exemption. So we do, we do cover all those.
I was talking to the Veterans Service Officer, was amazed at the work that you were doing, how progressive we were in connecting with the veteran population and how many we've been able to reach with your work.
Yeah, we do that. And actually, Greg Quilty, who you're speaking of, he helps out greatly with that. He's, was a great man to fill that job. Does a super job.
Eric, did you have any comments about this?
No, I'm just reading the Chapter 60. It's interesting. So, no, I think, I think it's a great program.
Mike?
No, I think it's a great idea. These household incomes, just for the people out there that may be watching this are very low, actually, it's $30,000. And that's not just for the head of household, it's the combined income of anyone who lives in there as the principal residence.
Correct.
In the 65-year, 65-year-old cutoff doesn't apply in cases of disability. You can be younger than that if you're disabled, and there's various earmarks for that, right? Why don't you talk a little bit about that?
That's correct. We, we're still a little unclear about that. We have a call into the Department of Revenue of Legal Services right now to get their opinion on it, because it defines elderly or disabled. But I think they leave it up to the committee to decide. And we're curious, do you have some guidelines? What is elderly? And in looking at some statutes, depending upon what you're looking at, it's anywhere from 60 to 62, 65. Exemptions are 70, 65 at local options. So we're looking for a little guidance from them as well, to find out, you know, what can we use as a guide for that, for the committee when it is established?
And then in the law, there's, there's a lot of different definitions of elderly for a lot of different purposes. For example, the one that's 60 that stands out is if, in the criminal law, if you assault somebody that's 60 years of age or older, that's the cutoff point. It's aggravated assault. So it depends on really what you're talking about, how that, how that age, it kind of is a sliding
Exactly.
...scale type thing, you know?
And, you know, we do have cases, and that's why we're looking for direction from them, because we do have cases where we have people that could be as young as, you know, 60, 58, 59, and they kind of slip through the cracks because there's not a lot that's available for them. So we're looking to find out, you know, what do you define as elderly?
Yeah, I know. I mean, even look at the Social Security standards, that changes depending on the amount of retirees and the amount of contributors. That's, I think, looking forward, you're going to see that full vested age keep going up. It's going to have to. Now, I think 66.
And I don't know if it's in your package, but I know that we included the application from Barnstable. But Barnstable does have some literature on it. And I think that they, that they, their committee awarded about $8,500 in various exemptions last year, of varying amounts.
This is a group of the populations, clearly that's vulnerable. And I'm happy to see that you're addressing this.
Mark?
I agree. Thank you.
Well, I look forward to it, the discussion at town meeting. And as it goes forward, we can talk about the merits of each one of the items there that we may adopt for our community. And it sounds to me like we may have some flexibility, so it'd be great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. So, Mark, Board and Committee Actions.
Okay. First item on the Committee Actions, we received a resignation notice from Jerry Manning. He resigned from the Drive-In Site Utilization Committee, so I would welcome a motion to accept his resignation. And thanks for all his service to the town.
I move to accept his resignation with thank for his, thanks for his service to the town.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. The next item deals with the Zoning Board of Appeals. We have to address the reappointments of several members as alternates. So I'm looking for a motion to reappoint Richard Neets, Jerry Garnick, Doug Campbell, Tom Barron, Susan Britta, as alternate members to the Board of Appeals to serve one-year terms, expiring January 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we have to deal with some reappointments with respect to the Waterways Shellfish Advisory Committee. So we're looking to, I could use a motion to reappoint Bob Churchill, Ellie Lawrence, and Brad Hall to the Waterways Shellfish Advisory Committee for the term of three years, ending March 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is Waterways Shellfish Advisory Committee Alternates. A lot of interest in this position. We have several people. I accept the motion to appoint Julian Mallett, Jesse Hagopian, and Richard Crawford as alternate members of the Waterways Shellfish Advisory Committee to serve one-year terms to the end of March 2019.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Do all three of them are new alternates? We didn't have any current alternates?
No. Not that I'm aware of. I think this is, I think we may have lost them.
And how many alternates does the charge allow for, do you know?
The charge, as I understand it from Carl, is that we can appoint at least three, but I don't know the maximum number. They've been concerned about having, this is a problem that we've had with a couple of other committees, where we've needed added alternates to make sure that there be, there can be a quorum, so...
That's why I was wondering, I mean, I guess the only reason I'm asking is because we just appointed, so we have full boards. I just hope that, you know, we're checking the attendance of the members that we're reappointing and not reappointing those that aren't making meetings regularly. It seems odd for a shellfish, the shellfish would need alternates, three alternates.
Well, I can, if...
I don't have a problem with it. I just, I just...
No, 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 I understand. I think one of the things, this came out of a discussion that I had, because I haven't, we have, I haven't had the chance to go to any of the meetings. And I was aware that there at times have been quorum problems. So I had suggested that we try to address that. They do have the position of alternates. I don't believe there's any dissatisfaction or issues with the members that are serving. There have been a couple of members who've left. They've been on vacation, or they've gone to travel. Ellie Lawrence is here. She might be able to, if...
We don't need to take public, it's okay. It's fine. I just, I just...
Well, she's on the committee. She could...
Thank you very much, Ellie. I appreciate you offering, but...
I have moved those appointments.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Not, motion carries. Finally, there are three appointments to the Community Housing Committee. We have three outstanding candidates. I interviewed them with, or actually, I interviewed two of them with Mary Wagon, Lee Hamilton, Lorraine Doyle, and Susan Christensen. I am recommending that we appoint them to complete a three-year term. There have been some vacancies here, so we're looking to fill out a three-year term ending October 2020. And I would accept the motion to do so.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. The motion carries. That concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Approval of minutes, October 17th and October 24th in the packet.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Next item is Upcoming Agenda Review. Today is, I don't know what day it is, February 27th. So March 6th, is everybody available to begin on the 5th? At 5:00 PM, I mean, I'm sorry.
That's a long meeting.
From the, yeah, we're going to meet from the 5th to the 6th. Sometimes I feel like it's a day long. So is everybody available to be here at 5:00 PM? Mark?
I, the reason why I've been late a few meetings is because I teach at the college, and sometimes those classes go over. 5:00 would be, I mean, I could be here, but it would be, again, a little late. It depends on the avail, you know, I do office hours sometimes after class, and this is one of those days. But I could be here. I'd just probably be about 15, 20 minutes late.
Okay.
5:30? You want to start it?
Yeah, we could start. We're just trying to get ahead of it.
No, I understand, and I totally appreciate that. I...
Well, we're going to go through the...
This is going to be a regular meeting, right?
Ambulance will be the first pickup. Although, let me add, if I might, we were notified, there's been some communication back and forth with Senator Sears' office and Representative Peak. And there has been a lot of different communication amongst the delegation up and down the Cape on the Airbnb taxation issue and whatnot. And one of the things that Association of Administrators were pretty clear on is that these are such important conversations to take place up in Boston that the boards would appreciate being briefed. So we asked that the delegation that represents Yarmouth be available all in one time to address the board on this topic, because there's going to be a lot of legislative activity very shortly going on up in Boston. And so the date that they were able to coalesce around was March 6th. So that would start off. We've asked them to be here at 5:00 to give you a briefing as to what the legislative calendar looks like on this particular topic. And then we would go to ambulance fees after that.
Okay. I don't have an objection to a meeting that date.
So we're really not going to start early at all, because that's going to take an hour. It's a big time.
I think the last time they were here, it was like an hour and a half. It was a long...
Yeah, well...
Where we've tried to...
It's really that subject.
Yeah, it's a big topic. And what we've expressed to them is the concern that this will make town meetings confusing going into the May session.
They missed the, they missed the town meeting window. And the fact that the way the state operates is so out of sync with what we're trying to do. But in any of the conversations I've had with them, I think it's important that this board has a voice prior to them acting
Yeah.
...in Boston.
I agree with that.
And, you know, whether, I mean, we've missed the opportunity altogether. So in terms of their timing, it's bad. But, I mean, we still, we still have a voice, and I think that it should go on the record publicly.
Before the debate begins in Boston.
Where we stand before they go up there and vote.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So that's the only change that you don't have presently on your calendar? That came in to me very late today.
Okay.
Bring our sleeping bags, is that the...
We, see, I was right. We could start on the 5th. So March 13th, is there anything? We have no meeting March 13th.
No, the 13th is, the room's been reserved for the Drive-In Site meeting, so...
We can meet somewhere else.
I think we're in pretty good shape. Everything's been set up to go to the 20th. We do have the 22nd, it seems to be the date for the Tri-Town wastewater meeting over at Dennis Town Hall, so, or not, at Dennis Council.
I hear you. Yeah.
Well, I prefer to have three meetings instead of two marathon meetings, personally, because I know the last meeting that we started at 5:00, by the time we got to the end, I had, I mean, we were five hours into it. It was exhausting. It's exhausting. And it, and these issues deserve full attention. So I'm concerned about putting, you know, especially looking at March 20th and March 6th together. I prefer to meet on 13th, but that's just me.
We do have the 27th, that would give you, if you did the 13th, that would give you five total meeting nights in that month, four for the Yarmouth Board, and then one Tri-Town. Is the legislation discussion something that we can do on the 13th and not take regular meeting time to do? It was very difficult to get them to agree to all come down to us.
Yeah, it's around his schedule, not ours.
Yeah, what about our schedule?
I know. Well, this has been the problem. He's very busy.
Just the two of them.
It should be three. Julian Seer, Senator Will Cracker, and Tim Whelan.
Will Cracker and Tim, too.
So you actually have the three of them, tentatively.
That's what, that was the plan.
That's incredible.
There's a lot of mixed messaging going on up and down the Cape on this particular topic, so...
Well, I think it's going to be a long meeting on the 6th, so it's up to the board, whatever they want to do. If they want to leave it like this and not meet on the 13th, but I think that the 6th and the 20th are going to be tough. All right, hearing nothing, we'll just leave it that way.
We'll do our best to keep...
5 o'clock.
Yep.
Anybody have anything else?
Is there anything? I mean, we won't know until we're into it on the 6th. It's not as if, I mean, what could we put off to the 13th? We don't have an awful lot of choices in terms of the...
The hearing's been scheduled by advertisement. So one of the things that we could, the Hockenham Road issue, which I don't anticipate to be a large item, the petition has been scheduled for that. There is an internal meeting or a discussion that you wanted on the Vineyard Wind permitting process, so that potentially could move. We could also, if you wanted to, depending upon how ambitious you were, to get into the golf budget situation, we could move that, too. But the ambulance hearing has been set, because that was also advertised. So there is a chance to move two of those items to an abbreviated meeting on the 13th that we could schedule at BSU, I suppose, or some other suitable location. Could we take anything, just to make it a, I mean, if we're going to go there...
We could take the 20th stuff.
Might as well be to take some things from the 20th and put them on the 13th, too? We could look to see what we could do to rearrange the 20th... We could look to see what we could do to rearrange the 20th, to add those into the 13th, that's correct, we could do that.
Is everybody available on the 13th? I mean, I know it's tough to meet all the time, but I.
This time of year, that's kind of the way it is, so.
I know, but I don't plan anything else on Tuesdays, but.
Well, I mean, I'm with Tracy, I'd rather have more frequent and shorter meetings than less frequent and longer meetings.
Well, I felt bad when Jeff was here the last time, it was like 9:30, and.
Who?
When the DPW, Jeff was here the last time we had the long meeting, I think it was like 9:00 or 9:30 before he started, and I really don't feel like he got, we got the dialogue that we needed to have with it, but.
Well.
So is everybody available on the 13th?
Yep.
So maybe we can find a location and see if we can move things around and shorten them up a little bit.
Yeah, I'm not sure moving golf, we're talking about the operating budget on the 6th.
Yeah, it goes together, maybe?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's been such a, it's been discussed any number of times, and I think moving it away from similar topics makes it.
Now, did the, did the petition articles have to be advertised?
No, they, the.
So can we see if we can do all three of them, and maybe the marijuana, well.
Well, you know, we could move Cape Car water Protection Trust to see what their schedule is. Yeah.
Would you be available on the 13th instead of the 6th?
Well, that's an internal presentation.
Oh, okay, that's not from them?
Yeah, it's, no, it's the permitting overview that you were looking for.
Okay.
And that's certainly something we can, we can move on to the 13th.
All right.
And then we'll grab some items from the 20th and put into the 13th.
I think that would be much better.
Okay.
Is the board okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. All right, individual items. Mark, we'll start with you.
I don't have any individual items for tonight.
Mike?
I'll pass.
Norm?
Couple things, you know, we, our agenda's full at this point. I hope that our school committee is, particularly with all the events in Florida, taking up the issue of school security very seriously. You know, there's so much discussion about having security to prevent people from entering our schools. But if you just think about it, our children are not in the school a lot of the time. They're out at recess, they're out in playing fields, they're on buses, and, you know, there really has to be an awful lot more discussion on this, and I just, I hope that the school committee is taking an opportunity to really delve into this and do what we can locally. You know, I'm not, I don't have an awful lot of confidence in what the national picture holds, and I think we as a community are on the firing line, literally and figuratively, but, and I think we have to address as conscientiously as we can, the opportunities to deal with this issue, so. The second thing I just wanted to bring up, we had a volunteer resign, and I, I'm not sure if I heard or read some of the circumstances, and I was really uncomfortable with what I was hearing, and I don't know if it's accurate or not, but one of the things that I'm uncomfortable about is that it seems as if people are shouting down volunteers based on alleged conflicts of interest. And I'm very, very concerned about that type of activity. I mean, there are statutes that deal with conflicts of interest, and I don't think that members of our community who have spent a lot of time volunteering for committees should be put in positions of being pressured. And I guess, I don't know if I'm speaking out of context based on rumors or misinformation, but I really, I'm very disturbed by the thought that people who have spent an awful lot of time on town business could be pressured to resign based on, I think, improper interpretations of what are conflicts of interest.
Comment on that, Norm? I think I know the matter you're talking about, and I don't think the individual did have a conflict of interest, but I think why they resigned wasn't just the fact that they were accused of having a conflict of interest, but people were actually taking actions to boycott the individual's business.
Yeah.
And it was hurting the person's livelihood, and they, you know, they stepped down for that reason, and I don't, I don't condone those kind of tactics either, but I agree, but again, I don't, I think the conflict of interest was kind of a hollow accusation, but the economic realities of that kind of venom is what drove that person to resign.
And, you know, and I think that goes to the point of civility in government, and civility in the way we treat people and how we communicate. We don't have to be constantly, you know, guarding our words, but we have to be factual and not using terms that are inappropriate, and in this particular case, not really in accordance with the law. So, yeah, I guess I've said my piece on that.
No, it's unfortunate, I concur with what you're saying. I think, you know, the statute speaks for itself, and, you know, if it was a legislative body or an advisory committee, but, you know, I think what was happening is they took, as what Mike said, the tactic that they were gonna hurt his business, and it's unfortunate, very, very unfortunate situation. But I can't blame him for doing it, but I'm appreciative for the time that he has given, and he wasn't the first one on that committee that, that they, that happened.
Just to let the board know, when that's brought to my attention, I make a contact with the individual who could be the subject of that, and I, they have been provided training by legal counsel on this issue, and they're also given the advice and contact information to the State Ethics Board, because the actual conflict is between, potentially, and it needs to be explained to that person by the board attorney, and there's two ways you can go, you can get an oral opinion by the attorney of the day, or you can ask for a written declaration. And even if there was, and I would say that there are some, obviously, sitting in Boston, they take the information for what it is, they tend to be somewhat liberal, if you would, with an interpretation, but there is always the opportunity for it to come back to the board if there's a case, to clear it up through a special appointment of a municipal employee, and then that way, that protection goes to the entire board. And that, when I, if the person who is the subject of that such a complaint, that's always told to them as well, is that there is a local way to remedy this, if you so want to pursue that, and I leave it totally up to them to decide how they want to go, and then I said, just please, let us know what you want to do, and that's how we've handled it.
Oh, but why would he? I mean.
Oh, no, I understood, I just want you to know.
In this case, that aside, what you're saying aside, that process aside, these people took steps.
Understood.
That impacted him personally.
Yeah, I can't speak to that, I can just simply say that what we provide to the people who come to us with that situation, they're given all of the advice, and none of it's ever made public unless the person who is the subject of it decides to make it public. So it's always done to that level of confidentiality.
Yeah, almost anybody, you know, if you want to interpret things in very broad terms, almost anybody has a conflict in one way or another. I mean, and particularly business people in a community like ours, it's easy to say, oh, well, you know, you have a conflict, anything that might benefit you. Well, that's not true. It has to be a very direct involvement.
And we don't get the information as to what the outcome is, if whether or not the person, our volunteer, ever made the contact, it's just simply, here's the pathway.
Right.
Let us know what you want to do, you know?
I think Norm's right, it has to be, there's language in the conflict law that says you have to have conflict in, quote, "a particular matter." It's not enough that there could be some general benefit that may be for real estate agents or people in the restaurant business or motels, that doesn't constitute a conflict. It has to be a particularized matter that's specific to you. And with Dan's point, I had an issue once that came up with me, and what I did, and I think what's the best way to do if somebody thinks they have a conflict, which, again, as Tracy said, I don't think was really the point here, is you write down all of the details and circumstances of the particular issue that you're struggling with, and they'll issue a written opinion, and I think that's the safest thing for somebody to do.
That's correct.
Well, I think it's important that, number one, again, the civility of communication is very important, and number two, our community, and it's obvious, we take efforts to protect our volunteers from inappropriate accusations, and otherwise, we'd have very few people that would volunteer for our services, and we really need those people's efforts, so.
Thank you. Thank you. The only thing I really have is to remind everybody that taking the pledge and stand against domestic violence, the White Ribbon Day, is March 1st, Cape Cod Irish Village, between 9:00 AM and 11:00 AM. That's on March 1st, 9:00, Cape Cod Irish Village, the White Ribbon Day. Other than that, Dan, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. On the consent agenda, there is an item, communication for the Community Development Block Grant, One Year Action Plan, that is in resolution format, and this is an annual event that we go through that indicates how we're gonna use our block grant money. There's also, everybody's signature is requested in the signature packet that's going around on that block grant resolution. The other one is the application for a special entertainment license from the Chamber for the summer concert series in Parker's River Beach, and then donation approval request from IPD.
Move the consent agenda?
To a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Tell them, minister, your updates.
Thank you. Invitations have gone out to various delegates or dignitaries from Boston, Lieutenant Governor and the Commissioner of the DEP for the March 22nd meeting. There'll be a press release soon on that. That does officially kick off the three-town effort, if you will, although Selectman Forrest, myself, and a small delegation of town staff have been meeting since last year on this particular topic related to wastewater, so that's coming up. The other item, tomorrow night is a Matta Key School Building Committee meeting night. That's getting very close to the final decisions that need to be made as it relates to what's being sent to Boston, so if anybody has any.
Is there a way to put that off a couple of weeks until the?
Wish there is, we're on a very tight deadline schedule.
Do we have a renegotiation meeting scheduled?
We do, actually, that came out today. There's a request to meet with Dennis on Monday, and over in Dennis Town Hall. I'm gonna anticipate that the Yarmouth team will be able to attend it, and there'll be an agenda posted 48 hours in advance that'll get out to the team.
So in terms of timing, do we have the ability to, at what point in time do we have our first position taken as this board for the Matta Keys building?
It's a really good question.
Because one, in my opinion, my position on that will be very different with one outcome or the other.
I believe at some point soon in the future, the owner's project manager will call for the two boards and the finance committee with the school board to come back together one more time, probably within the next six weeks, I believe. And that'll be the big opportunity to decide what we should be doing. Of course, at the, there's always that, at the tail end of this process, the opportunity to decide what you want to do as well, but those, the time to be weighing in on this topic is coming very quickly.
Okay.
So I'll know more tomorrow and be able to communicate that to you next week.
Yeah, I think, you know, likewise, and I've thought so much about this whole situation, and the alternative of having to fund what I feel is a disproportionate share of the new school. And, you know, I wish I could see the substantial benefit of the new school in the location that's proposed, but we have, we've received no information with regard to a substantial benefit.
That would be correct, yeah.
And there's two administrative offices being proposed for that building.
In this plan?
Yes.
Oh, that's the first I've heard of that.
Yeah, one for the 4th to 5th, and one for the 6th to 7th. And a question was asked about that, and it was stated that the administration believes that both of the administrations of the, of Wixon and Matta Keys need to continue. And so, and that, that just gives me a lot of difficulty in trying to understand what the benefit is, other than having new facilities, brand-new facilities. And how do we present that to our community as an advantage to our community? And I, you know, I'm really torn on this thing. And, you know, if we don't have, I think, a meaningful compromise with regard to our agreement with Dennis, it's going to have a significant impact on my thinking.
Well, the impact on my thinking is in light of the recent information on the status of Emmy Small. And, you know, I'm willing to work with our partners if it's equally beneficial, but, you know, at some point in time, we have to worry about the taxpayers of Yarmouth. And knowing that Emmy Small is coming around the corner, if, in my opinion, I'm gonna tell you, that I will push for a building that fixes Matta Keys and Emmy Small, and they can worry about their own school.
Right.
That's where I'm at, unless, you know, unless there's a significant shift in capital investment, I think, you know, again, we didn't realize how bad Emmy Small is.
Right.
And the fact that that's going to be coming up right after that, I think that it's something that we need to consider.
It's not an easy.
No, no, it's difficult, but this time that it's taking is no reflection on our participation, our investment, our effort, you know.
I was just saying that, and to reiterate what Norm's getting at, is that the proposal for a four-grade building at Station Avenue is something based on the current status of the agreement, the school agreement, and the current status of the allocation of capital contribution is clearly to Dennis's benefit, and there's no real sharing in that benefit.
Right.
And no real impetus for Yarmouth to go along with that in the absence of. And no real impetus for Yarmouth to go along with that, the absence of compromise that affords a sharing of that benefit.
I agree.
Sorry, Dan. I just had to get my, my points up there because.
Now's the time.
Time is ticking and I, you know, I'm afraid we're going to get to the end of this and be like, why didn't you say something before?
Feel like we're in a corner.
And here we are in a scenario that I, I feel like it's getting, it's going faster than we can agree and, you know, I'm not sure who's in control of the project, but we certainly aren't.
No, that's a really good point. And so I, I, we've had some discussion amongst some members about, you know, if, if it moves off the Matta Keys site, goes to the Station Avenue site, then we really do lose control.
Right.
Right? So if it, if it, if it stays at the Matta Keys site, that it stays as a Yarmouth proposition and you have more flexibility of what the future could be with that.
Correct.
That way. So to your point, now is the time to speak candidly with our partners as to.
Yeah.
And when I talk about that, that's the building committee, that's the school committee, that's the Dennis board, the finance board, and, because none of this has been ironed out to anyone's satisfaction.
Right, yeah. It, it's been kind of at the building committee level and, and I understand that it's not a subject that, the financial relationship and, and operating relationship is not something that committee is responsible for. So, you know, they've been reluctant to, to listen and, but we're approaching the point where that, that is, it's the elephant in the room and we've got to deal with it.
I, I think to their, to the building committee's point, they, they've been focused on what, like in their world, outside of the agreements between the two towns, what is the most expeditious and cost-effective way to do the four-grade option? And all along the way, we've been hearing from them, well, how are you coming with your negotiations?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and it hasn't, we've literally been stopped for six weeks, you know, so.
Well, and there really hasn't been any, any discussion, to Tracy's point about Emmy Small either, not any significant discussion, although, you know, certainly Carol has acknowledged that were she in a different position, she would, she would recommend that Emmy Small first as, as a project. And, you know, so.
Just so we're clear, any of these processes, though, they can be slowed down, they can be halted, you can go up to Boston, you can state your case as to where you're at and they are very patient up there because they've already allocated this project in the queue. So I, I don't want anybody to think like somehow the process would be horribly.
Spinning out of control.
Yeah, you know, if, if we decided we just weren't comfortable with the way things are going. My experience with MSBA is they're, they're very much workable as long as you work with them along the way. And now's the time to raise these issues.
Who's the, who has the authority to request that we put a pause on this until we figure out?
I think it's.
Because my, my problem is we're going to be spending money.
Yeah.
Going in one direction where this board may not want to go in the end.
I think, I think it would be fair to say that a delegation from Yarmouth with the superintendent could have that dialogue directly up in Boston. It's our project as a way it was originally financed and we have not had satisfactory answers on a few of these items and we need time, either time to work it out or do something different, but, you know, now is very much the time to speak candidly on that topic.
Well, I guess we can wait to see, we can, maybe we need to, I don't know if you guys will have anything to bring to us at, at one of the next meetings, but hopefully at some point in time, we're going to have to.
Well, we have a meeting tomorrow and, you know, I, I, I don't think it's inappropriate to, to bring up the subject and to say, you know, we, we have a critical meeting coming with, with Dennis and that could have a significant impact on the stance, stance of our town with regard to this project and, and to the timing of the project. And just make the committee aware that.
Absolutely, yeah.
It's not a slam dunk.
I don't know. I mean, I think you should, we should make sure that that's the will of the other members before you, I mean, that's just my opinion.
Right, no, I understand.
But I don't know how Mike feels about it and Mark?
I can tell you how they feel about it. Unless they move off dead center, we've got some serious problems and we got to reevaluate whether, I mean, my own view is if you look at, if you accept a status quo in terms of the, the capital funding for that project without any compromise by Dennis, and you look at a four-grade option on Station Avenue, which basically in that scenario would only be, benefit Dennis, I would go back to the drawing board and do something with Matta Keys.
And Emmy Small together, I mean, yeah.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's how I feel.
Keep our options open, yeah, for the future.
Because that wouldn't, that wouldn't cost us a whole lot more money?
No, that's correct.
It would cost Dennis a lot more money down the road.
Yeah.
And let them deal with their schools.
Right.
That's how I feel.
But, but that's not what I want to see happen.
No, right.
And that's not what I, I think is in the best interest of both towns, but it takes two to come to a fair compromise.
Yeah. Mark, where are you at? Just so we can give you a chance to speak on our behalf.
Well, I mean, I've, I've been, in the beginning, I was, had the opportunity to pay some attention to what was going on, but quite frankly, you know, the last, you know, the last couple of months, it's, it's been, I don't say radio silence, but I really, I, I think it would be helpful for me to, to have a more fruitful, engaging conversation amongst members of the board on this. I, I hear routinely the comments about the condition of the small school. And in the back of my mind, what concerns me is that if we're having trouble agreeing on how we're going to pay for a major undertaking, I'm not sure that's the best, I mean, I, I don't think under those conditions, you ought to proceed until you have an agreement on how things ought to be financed. It would seem to be out of sync. It wouldn't make sense to move forward with a major project if the two towns really don't agree on how to handle the costs, so.
So you're okay at least to having Norman update them that we're concerned about moving?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's to, I, I think that's being honest with them, to be, it's being frank with them. I think, I think, I, I, I applaud the patience that everyone has with this whole process. I don't know if I'd be as patient, but I think we all know that in the long run, what we're, what's at stake here is, is a very important relationship with the two towns, given the implications for all of the other things that we, we need to work together with them on. But I think on the schools, we have to, if, if we can't agree on the costs, then I think we have to really assess our options in terms of what to do next. So I'm, I'm, I think my sentiment is very similar to yours and to some of the others.
Okay.
And I want to just say for the benefit of, of the public that we, Norm and I, and I think I speak for Norm as well, we thought that these things were going to run at, at a parallel course and that we were going to have answers to what the respective financial contributions were going to be at or before the time of the decision-making on what kind of a school project we were going to support. In the meetings, we faithfully, diligently, and in good faith, attended the meetings, made all kinds of proposals, and we're not the ones that halted those meetings or interrupted those meetings. We were always willing to attend and to go there and to participate in good faith. For whatever reason, Dennis decided that they were going to put a halt to it. And now they want to resume, which, which I'm, I'm happy about. They want to resume the talks come next Monday and, but this, I think the, the kind of the crisis Tracy is talking about was not occasioned by anybody on this side of the.
Right.
The table.
I think that's well said, yeah.
And I would add that we gave them many offers of how to finance.
Right.
Whether it was the operating cost, capital cost, this school building project, different options, historical paths, the way we did things in history.
Yeah.
With everything that we offered, it was not met with any great reception.
And, and we provided examples from other communities across the state with approaches very similar to the things that we were asking about, so.
But hopefully reasonable minds will prevail and we'll come to a good solution for both towns. That's my hope and my expectation going forward.
Mark, too.
So with that, on that note, we will report back after tomorrow and Monday, on Tuesday, as to how we made out, so.
Good. Looking forward to it. Hopefully we'll have some answer. Anything else, Dan?
No, that's it.
Anybody else have anything?
No. Motion to adjourn?
Hold on, Chris has something.
My, thank you.
Sorry.
Just wanted to quickly acknowledge an intern who's been working with the town for the past two months. He's wrapping up this Thursday. Brian Mingaleli from Mass Maritime has been working with the town on building out our emergency management materials and information for the public. He's also been working with public safety agencies to work on their emergency plans and emergency preparedness. So in the coming days, you should see coming online some great resources for the public around how to prepare for a hurricane, where the safety zones and shelters are, where the flood zones are, some great information for the public. So he's been a huge help. It's a great partnership that we've, we've engaged in with Mass Maritime and I think he's been really beneficial to the, to the community. So I just want to acknowledge his, his hard work.
Yes, well, thanks to Brian. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, he actually gave us a presentation the other day and what he was tasked with was no easy chore. Earlier this year, or actually it was last summer, we were confronted by some new visitors or new residents to town about emergency preparedness and, and they, their inability to find brief, concise, and appropriate information in one location on the website was disappointing to them. So we made it a critical mission to resolve that and the outcome that Brian worked on on a lot of different fronts, integrated some of the work that we had, but revamped a lot of it and, and it looked fabulous. And what I'd like to be able to do after we clear budget in town meeting, because he is a Yarmouth resident, which was a, a nice product, a byproduct of that relationship, is that he got to know a lot of the folks that serve the town and, and to bring them back and, and put that presentation on takes about 20 minutes, walk you through it just before the big hurricane season and hopefully it'll be live before the Friday big sea storm that's coming up. But, but it does certainly fit the bill that a lot of people have asked. There was a lot of anxiety last year with the big storms and, and it was mindful that there was not a lot of Yarmouth-specific information, some county stuff, but, but this will really answer that bill, so he did a great job for us.
Excellent. Look forward to that.
So we'll be able to find it online without a problem?
Yeah, we'll send out the link in an email.
Really? You promise? You promise?
Give my word.
It'll, it'll be a Facebook post.
Oh, really? Okay. Yeah, I'm anxious to see how this works.
Perfect. Motion to adjourn?
Yep.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Calls in favor?
Aye.
Great, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.